Good morning, honorable members of the Board of Commissioners for Roscommon County. As you know, I am Jamie Hauserman, your Equalization Director. In front of you today is the L-4402 Statement Showing Taxable Evaluations and Mills Aportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for 2025. If you'll bear with me, we've got a bunch of legalese to go through. So, MCL 211.37 orders in part that at this session held prior to October 31st, that the Board of Commissioners shall direct their Equalization Director to ascertain and determine the amount of monies to be raised for county purposes and shall apportion that amount and the amount of state tax and indebtedness of the county to the state among the several townships. We shall also examine the certificates, statements, papers, and records that have been submitted to your county clerk and to your Equalization Director showing that the monies to be raised in the several townships are for school, highway, township, and other purposes. The County Board of Commissioners shall direct the monies proposed to be raised for these legally authorized purposes to be spread on the tax rules for the proper townships. At this time, I can certify that the statements, papers, certificates, and records submitted by those various townships and village and all other taxing authorities were examined, and the L-4402 represents the compilation of those documents that you have in front of you today. They have until September 30th annually to provide the documents that then are compiled, thus why you're getting them so close to the wire from our office. Further, MCL 211.34D holds that at this annual session in October, the County Board of Commissioners shall not authorize the levy of a tax unless the governing body of that taxing jurisdiction has certified that the requested millages have been reduced, if necessary, to be in compliance with Section 31, Article 9 of State Constitution of 1963. And at this time, I can also confirm that the certified rates had been adjusted by Hadley, MCL 211.34D, MCL 211.34E, and Truth in Taxation, MCL 211.34 subset 1, and are also in compliance with Section 31, Article 9 of the State Constitution of 1963, and also in compliance with MCL 211.37. Please know that MCL 211.37 also states in part that this Board may refer any and all certificates, statements, papers, records, and proceedings to your county prosecuting attorney, who shall then investigate and without delay provide your Board back with a written opinion of its legal validity. MCL 207.12 mandates that the Director of your Equalization Department in each county within our state shall report then to the State Tax Commission on Form L-4402 the amount of the edvolum taxes to be raised in the municipalities within our county for state, county, municipal, township, school, and other purposes. This is to include the aggregate taxable value of properties in each of the municipalities within our county. These certified rates are subject to MCL 211.36, which allow for additional millages to be voted on up to December 2nd of 2025 for schools, and if adopted, up to November 4th, 2025, for other taxing jurisdictions. That means that at this time, I have also verified with the county clerk, Michelle Stevenson, that there is, in fact, millage proposals on the November 4th ballot that would require a collection period starting in 2025, shall they pass. This means that there is a likelihood that we will do this exact same meeting again shortly following the November 4th election. We've already tentatively scheduled that meeting for November 12th. The only change on this report on November 12th would be if, in fact, there was a millage that passed that was authorized to be levied. With that, are there questions of the Board for me on the reporting? I will say that this—
I'm sorry, go ahead. So, back in—the since I'm new, back in the—a while back, you did the L-4029. So, that relates and compiles into this, correct?
Correct. So, when we talk about statements, papers, and records, ultimately, the State Tax Commission has ruled that the L-4029 is the only document that we are allowed to use for a tax levy request. So, each of the jurisdictions that are legally authorized to collect within our county submits those documents. Some of those cross into other counties, Core, Kirtland. Others, there's a Roscommon School District, it's got a little bit, I believe, in Crawford County. And we've got a little bit over in Masaki County and Houghton Lake School District.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jamie, Burden College is over four million?
That's what they're collecting.
Burden College is over four million. Is that Roscommon County's share of that?
Correct, yes. So, what's in front of you, those dollars proposed for collection, are just the collectible amounts within our county? So, anything that crosses jurisdictional lines would be—that. What I can tell you about both of our local school districts, Houghton Lake School District and Roscommon School District that we collect for, the amount of dollars in other jurisdictions is incredibly minimal. So, I would say that the vast majority you would be seeing with those two. The others, we are one of eight jurisdictions that collect for Core and for Kirtland. So, in those situations, you would not see anywhere close to their totals. I can also say that this report, indifferent from prior years, due to how the State Tax Commission has changed the taxable value reporting for disabled veterans exemptions, you're now seeing a second line item added in there. You see one that's lighter in color. That would match the numbers that are on your equalization report that we processed in April. That was the beginning of our process. Then you saw those L-4029s come through. You're specifically showing the rollback fractions that were collected as—or that were required in those calculations. That's where you're getting to this number, the taxable value minus the DVE, Disabled Veteran Exemption, Senior Housing for Pilp Projects, and Rent Zones. We do not have one of those. That number now is what you're going to use as the multiplier to get the dollars collected. That's the closest way you're going to get to those numbers. And so, that'll be a little different than you've seen in the past. But I will say it's a far more realistic amount of dollars. What we were seeing in the past and what we were calculating, and that was early days, Jody and I were calculating, was what that dollar amount looks like. And in our county, it's a substantial, like, million-plus-dollar amount. So, this gives you a far better indication of the actual true dollars potentially collectible. Do you have any other questions for me? Then at this time, I respectfully request that the following motion be adopted at your next regular session meeting, not today, the one in two weeks. Please move to adopt the L-4402 Statement Showing Taxable Evaluations Aportioned by the County Board of Commissioners for 2025, and authorize me, Jamie Hauserman, your Equalization Director, to sign the 4402, thereby authorizing and directing the various assessing officers to spread the rates against the taxable values for 2025. Thank you.
Number two, Board of Canvassers Appointment, Recommendations. Michelle Stevenson, Clerk, Register of Deeds.
Good morning. I, Deputy Clerk Heather Pratt, presenting on behalf of Clerk, Register of Deeds. Clerk, Register of Deeds Stevenson had requested three names from the Republican—sorry, Republican and Democratic Party Chairs per statute to fill the expiring terms of one representative from each party on the Roscommon County Board of Canvassers. At this time, she has only received a list—I'm sorry. At this time, she has received a list of three names from the Republican Party Chair, but only one letter of interest, which is a requirement by the Board of Commissioners. That letter came from Ms. Kathy Pardue, a current member serving on the Board of Canvassers. Kathy's letter is included in your packet. She has been a valuable asset to the Board of Canvassers. Her term is set to expire October 31st, 2025. She is seeking to be reappointed to the Board of Canvassers for a four-year term. Clerk, Register of Deeds Stevenson has had communication from the Democratic Party Chair and was expecting a letter that she has not yet received. Clerk, Register of Deeds Stevenson will move forward with the procedure to fill the vacancy according to statute. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. So, if Kathy was the only one, three were brought forward by the Republican Party, one wrote the letter. So, what do they do with the other two names? Do they have to have a letter, or are they not eligible anymore? Do you know?
We'll have to get back to you on that.
That's not a problem. I was just curious of the process. Thank you.
With no further questions, this meeting is adjourned, and our next meeting begins at 10 o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please. Russo?
Here.
Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Here.
Milburn?
Here.
Censor?
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, it's five, six, two, two. Five, six, two, two.
Roll call, please.
Thank you.
Yes. Wolfson?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda. Within the consent agenda, we have meeting minutes from September 17th, 2025, Special Higgins Lake Meeting, and September 24th, 2025, Board Meeting. Class A's in the amount of $3,263,868.37, and claims in the amount of $596,763.33. Correspondences, which includes county resolution opposing the House of Representatives fiscal year 2026, budget cuts to county revenue sharing, RTA meeting agenda, MAC legislative updates, correspondences to the Board, Fall Cleanup Event flyer, Higgins Lake Property Owners Newsletter, and the Roscommon County Animal Shelter Vaccine Clinic flyer. Monthly department reports include the Sheriff's Activity Report for September, the EDC Director's Report, the Clerk, Register of Deeds update, and the Administrator Controller Report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Roll call. Milburn?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items?
Did you permission, Madam Chair?
Bruce, if you want to come up, because we are talking about Person of the Year. Not at all.
If you have any—if you have any questions for me afterwards, please address them to Freddie. I'm Bruce Bentley. My wife Maria's at the church making the pasties, but we've been doing, involved with Toys for Tots for 21 years here in Roscommon County. This is the anniversary year, because it's actually 35 years that it started, 1990. Back then, they did, first year, 50 families and about—it was like, I would have to guess, not very many children, around 100. This past year—
Lay it on Bruce.
Yeah. It's outside.
This past year, we had over 1,200 families sign up. Only 1,050 showed up to pick up the toys. But we took care of 1,050 children here in Roscommon County. It's a labor of love. Today is actually the kickoff day here in Roscommon County, right? But when Mark said he wanted to nominate me, I thought, hey? But really, I have over 50 volunteers. Some of them have been with us for 21 years. And this recognition goes to them. They can look at that and say, they do recognize what we do. They do care. Any questions? I did forget to bring one thing, and you'll probably be all happy. That's my donation bank. I'd have passed it around, but that'll be next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
After I leave?
We'll see. I don't know what we're going to do. It's up to the Chair.
What's that?
It's up to the Chair. We'll do it two weeks from now. Thanks, Bruce. We'll see you tonight.
The DA's better than I do.
Any other public comment for agenda items? Visitors, we have Steve Curry, who is the Executive Director for the Michigan Association of Counties.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Sometimes I feel like I'm a stuffed animal to some meetings. It might go a little better. But I do have some presentation to run through today. Do bring some good news with the budget being done. Feel free to ask any questions as I go through the presentation, or if you want to wait till the end, it doesn't matter to me. I'm not real picky. So, let's see. There we go. So, just a little bit overview on MAC. We're primarily known for advocacy both at the state and federal level. At the federal level, we work in cooperation with the National Association of Counties. At the state level, we definitely look at it as a team effort with you folks. Hopefully, we're arming you with enough information so as your locally elected officials come back to their district, you can talk to them about some of the issues we're talking to them about in Lansing. We also provide various educational opportunities throughout the year. We host a couple conferences. I'll talk about that in a second. We put on the New County Commissioner's School in cooperation with MSU Extension. We also have a variety of webinars throughout the year. And in services, we have a lot of services that are available to counties through the association. I'll talk about those at the end, but you guys participate in many of those already. This is a little bit about our Board. Our Board is made up of 16 elected commissioners. You can see the broad, diverse geographical representation, so we do represent the whole state with county commissioners. There's two seats from each of those regions. We also have two at-large seats. The Board meets at least four times a year, both at our conferences, and then at least two more times outside the conferences. We did just have a Board election at this last conference. You have new representation for your region. Lisa Salgott from Alpena County is on the Board, and then Jay O'Farrell, Don O'Farrell, has been on the Board for a few years now. This is the current MAC leadership. Antoinette Wallace is now the Board President from McComb County, Brian Colke, First Vice President from Noguago County, William Miller, Second Vice President from Oakland County, and Melissa Dobbs is now the immediate past President. We did just have our annual conference, our 2026 Annual Conference, or, sorry, 2025 Annual Conference just completed. That's how good my staff is. They've already updated this slide with next year's conference information. So, that did just complete last week. A few of your Commissioners that were there, Commissioner Morley and Censor were there. We had great attendance this year, up 15%. We had record vendors there. You know, it was a really tumultuous time to have a conference when you're looking at a budget, state shutdown because of a budget, and a federal shutdown because of a budget. Never happened, really, before that I can remember. But we made it through. Our staff still was able to work remotely with some folks in Lansing, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Our next conference will be our Legislative Conference at the end of April, and that conference is always in Lansing, and that definitely has a little bit more of a legislative feel since it is in Lansing. So, these are some of our 2025 priorities. Revenue sharing is always going to be top of our list, and I'll talk about what happened in the budget. But this has to do with our Revenue Sharing Trust Fund, and there are bills for that again, and I'll talk more about that in a second. We were active in the Earn Sick Time Act reforms that occurred at the beginning of the year in support of that. There is the Veterans' Property Tax Exemption that has been out there for a while. We're not looking to change anything for the veterans that get that property tax exemption, but we do want the state to reimburse us for that Veterans' Property Tax Exemption, something we've worked on for a while. So, I think it'll happen this legislative session. Probably not, but it is something we constantly keep introducing, because you never know when it'll get traction. If you look at four-year county commissioner terms, we probably introduced that for 15 years before it actually got passed. Adopting Permanent State Solution for Funding Michigan Courts, I'll talk about that in a second, and then the road funding issue, and that's kind of been solved a little bit with our budget. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more. So, of course, major political shifts in Lansing now in this session. Republicans control the House 58-52. Democrats have a one-person majority in the Senate with still one open seat. That special election is not going to occur until next year. The House leadership did eliminate the Local Government Committee. What does that mean? Well, most of our bills would go through there, so it just means our bills get spread out through more committees, more work for our staff to educate those members and those committees about local government. And then through 2025, we've had 14 public acts actually signed, so that's pretty low. So, if we get in, start talking about the budget that was just signed yesterday. This is kind of the timeline. You had the Governor introduce her budget in February. The House passed a partial budget in March. The Senate passed their full budget in May. The June House did their education budgets. July 1st is always the statutory deadline for the state budget, that it should be passed and signed by the Governor. There's no teeth to that legislation, so it can come and go, and it doesn't matter. Nothing happens to anyone. So, then the House passed their budget in late August, and then we had nothing happen until the budget getting signed yesterday. So, it's happened a few times in the past, really not for any long period of time, and even this one was not very long. It was a few hours overnight while you were sleeping, so nothing really—you didn't really notice anything, and then they passed the continuation budget, which got us to yesterday. So, let's talk a little bit about what happened in the budget. So, of course, like I said, revenue sharing is always top of mind. There's $291 million for county revenue sharing. Through your work and your messaging and some of our work, we were able to avoid a 12% cut to county revenue sharing. So, what you got in fiscal year 2025 is what you will get in fiscal year 2026. So, kudos to you folks, talking to your members. We did some work as well, but that was huge. We worked really hard on that. There was a Public Safety Fund, Crime Reduction. Counties are now eligible for that fund. They were not previously. So, that's about $14.36 million. That is flexible, so you do have some discretion on how those funds can be used. There's also the Public Safety constituency grants. So, that's $17 million for the 15 high-crime counties in the state. However, those funds cannot supplant current funding, so you can't reduce your funding by a certain level and use those funds to make up that funding. You've got to maintain that certain level. There are also some changes in the current boilerplate that allowed that—those funding to go out in this current year, and you can kind of see those counties that are eligible for those funds. So, road funding was also a big part of the budget discussion. It's going to be about $1.5 billion to $1.85 billion a year, heavily focused on those funds going to roads. So, let's see how they got there. So, this slide kind of talks about the road funding revenue and how they get to that $1.5, $1.8 billion. So, all the taxes paid at the pump will now go right to the roads. So, the sales tax on gasoline goes away. It's replaced with a gas tax that is net neutral, so nothing you pay at the pump—you won't notice it at the pump. It's just a shift to roads. There is a new marijuana, 24% marijuana excise tax, which generates about $420 million, ironically, and that is on top of the 10% tax that's already there. So, there's a 10% tax that was there, where counties were eligible for some of those funds, depending on the number of dispensaries in their county. This is another 24%. However, that 24% goes, again, all to roads. And then there was a change in the corporate income tax, $688 million a year that will go towards roads. It replaces an income tax year mark of $600 million and adds $88 million. So, what happened was, in the general fund, they were already putting $600 million towards roads, towards this fund. They take that away with the shift in the corporate income tax. They replace that $600 million with $688 million, and that money will grow as the CIT revenue grows year over year. So, this talks a little bit about how those road funding dollars that were generated, how they're distributed. So, $460 million will go through the Michigan Transportation Fund, so that's a fund that's existed for a while, the normal PA $51, where counties get a significant portion at the bottom of that formula. They also created the Neighborhood Road Funds, so the majority of this fund goes to local roads. Some of it goes to critical bridges and things like that, but the majority of the funding does go towards local roads. Can be used on township roads without the match. That's up to the county if they want to do that, so that's some good discretionary options for you. $1.5 billion total. After deductions, counties get 52% of that fund. So, basically, it's a 35 and 1/2 increase for your local road agency, so your county road commissions, if you had a road commission; if you don't, road departments. So, pretty decent increase there for local roads. Not that anyone likes road construction, but people do like nice roads. So, let's get into—that's kind of the budget discussion. Let's talk about court funding. So, in fall of 2025, the Alternative Trial Court Funding Work Group report has come out. They did include some of our recommendations. This is a carryover of the 2017 Trial Court Funding Commission that had come out with seven different recommendations. Those recommendations, which we did support, the legislature started working on them and was slowly working on them. 2020 hits, everything falls apart, you know, COVID and everything. So, then we're back to kind of ground zero on court funding. We've kicked the can down the road on those fees being able to be charged for those who use the court system, so that you don't have to fund the courts through your budget. So, they rekindled kind of this Trial Court Funding Work Group again, and so we're waiting for legislation to see what the final recommendations—you know, this is a work group that came out with recommendation. Now, it's up to the legislature to do with it what they want. Once we see those bills, we'll come out with a better recommendation on whether to support or oppose those bills or go neutral. We'll see. We did—we were part of those work groups. We had representative county members on those work groups making recommendations. They did adhere some of those recommendations. We'll see what the final changes are. Of course, we do have another sunset date coming up at the end of 2026. The concern there being in 2026, everyone and their brothers up for reelection. Not a lot typically gets done in those election years. So, we'll be watching that date closely, watching these recommendations to see how they impact counties and if we need to once again extend that sunset date. So, I talked about Revenue Sharing Trust Fund and the priorities. These are the bill numbers that reflect that Revenue Sharing Trust Fund. What that trust fund does is ties a portion of the state sales tax and puts those funds into the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund, so we don't have to constantly be concerned about those funds being appropriated away. As you know, counties only get statutory revenue sharing. They do not get the constitutional that CBTs get. So, those funds could be 100%—that $291 million could be appropriated away for other things if the legislature wanted to. This would help prevent that. It wouldn't 100% prevent it. It would make it more difficult. We were successful in last legislative session, getting it passed out of the House 106 to 4, so broad bipartisan support on those bills. We do have, you know, new bill numbers, and we do have Senate bills that reflect the same change. So, we're hopeful to see movement on those now that we've got this budget done, and we'll see how much legislature can work together moving forward. Veteran Service Grants. So, these are the grants that the state said, hey, everyone, you got your grants? Great, go do your thing. And then, oops, we did bad math. We don't have enough money to give you those grant funding dollars. This is House Bill 4423. This would take those funds, that shortfall, and make it another appropriation, so those grants could be—those funds would be available to the counties for the grants that they thought they had. There was no movement on it yet. Right now, there's no supplemental in the 2025 budget to do that. We are hopeful, again, with the budget being done, that some of these things—that smaller things that we've been working on will get movement. things that we've been working on, will get movement. There is about $4 million in these grants for the FY 2026 budget, which was about the same dollar figure they had in the 2025 budget, so they basically carried it over, but we do need extra funding to fill the grants for 2025, which we are still working on. So that's kind of the policy issues we've been working on. All this policy development is done in our committees. Our committees meet typically from September to about May, June, once a month, Mondays and Fridays. You can participate remotely. You can see the five different committees there if you are interested in participating in those committees. There's an application online. You can do that, and our president can get you appointed. We do have a small PAC, the Counties United PAC. It is a PAC that we primarily support those 26 former county commissioners that are in the legislature, and we did have some really, ones that really came to our aid in this budget process on both sides of the aisle, so we do like to support them with their fundraisers in Lansing. You can donate at MICounties.org. I talked about the services before, so some of the services that we're providing, you, of course, are a member of our Workers' Compensation Fund. You have been for a long time. Very strong fund, many counties are a member of. Commissioner Sencer sits on that Board of Trustees. We provide a cooperative procurement program through our CoPro Plus program, which is kind of like a MyDeal for counties. There's over probably 80 contracts on there that counties can participate in and get discounted pricing because of the volume that we've negotiated there. Savvy is kind of a newer program that we've partnered with. It is a kind of a student loan forgiveness program that's like a TurboTax for that, so it's a kind of a county employee retention tool. Most counties are using it as where the county can pay a small fee per employee, and it allows their counties to have access to this network or this program that will go through. They put their information and scrub the 160 student loan forgiveness programs that are out there. Most people know of the public service one, but there's over 150 other loan forgiveness programs out there that people are eligible for, and so we've had a lot of counties take advantage of that and, you know, save money for their employees. And these are our communication tools, so hopefully you're getting our weekly legislative updates. There's a lot of information there. We've gone back to a printed newsletter that comes out every other month. We do a podcast every Monday that is kind of fun and kind of is a summary of our legislative update, but we do all the social media stuff as well. So that's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions folks may have.
Any questions?
Just good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay. Cody.
What information do you have on the Public Safety Trust Fund that they are putting money into? That's kind of like, I've read the little blurbs, but I don't really understand what the purpose is, how it would be distributed.
So I'm not sure how it's distributed either. You're talking not the prosecutor side, but the public safety side. Yeah, because there's a whole lot of moving parts to that when we were going through the budget process, because the governor had her recommendation, which counties were not eligible for. The Senate had their recommendation, which we could pretty much have a lot of flexibility for, and then the House, which we had limited flexibility for. So I think it ended up being a blend of both, but I can have Samantha from our staff reach out to you, and I'm sure she's still doing a deeper dive on the budget since we did just kind of get through it this week, and maybe we'll have a bigger update this Friday, but I can.
She will be up here Monday for the Northern Michigan, so I'll bug her then.
Okay, I can make sure she's prepped for that, too.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could you, for some of us who haven't followed the state budget as much, when the House passed their partial budget in March, there was a really great explanation at the conference about what does that really mean? Was their way of trying to get something in first because they knew in the future it was going to be hard?
Right.
That was a very lame explanation, but can you just explain that a little bit to us?
Yeah, they passed the budget, just a skinny down budget that they funded services that they did not want to have shut down, which essentially ended up getting passed a few hours after the October 1st budget deadline, which got us through to the final passage on Friday, whatever it was, Friday night or Thursday morning, I can't remember. That actually got us to that point, so they use that as kind of the, it's like a continuing budget at the federal level. That's kind of what they passed at the state level. Hasn't really been done much in the past, but that got us that bridge for the five days there that allowed us to still function as a government, because there was some debate whether the state could still function if they were not going to cut any checks, because, but they can't, technically, you can't spend money after October 1st. It's not a function of cutting checks, or you can't, you can't spend money, but so there was some debate about, so they used that to get us through to the actual budget being passed on the 7th and the signature of yesterday's.
So in your opinion, a pretty smart move to help get this through that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, we used it for its intent, right? It was intended for that purpose, and that's what it got used for.
And it happened, so we needed it. All right. So the revenue sharing piece for counties is, we're safe for now. That's good.
Yeah, flat from last year, so no cut.
So I heard at one of our township meetings that their revenue sharing was cut. What's the difference?
So they get constitutional revenue sharing and some statutory revenue sharing. We don't get the constitutional side. Typically, you don't see cuts to constitutional revenue sharing. It's constitutionally guaranteed. However, once you took the sales tax off gasoline, that was about, for the constitutional side, originally, they thought it was going to be about 95 million for all of constitutional, for all the cities, villages, and townships. Ended up being about a $65 million hit for them, so they did not backfill that dollar figure, whereas with the school portion of that sales tax that went away from that tax shift, they did backfill the schools on that portion. So they did lose, for all CBTs throughout the state, about $65 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
He stole some of our updates, right?
That's okay.
Say it much better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfinished business, HMO, HRA, HSA plans. Cody, would you like to start us out on this?
Sure. So twofold that, and I did have this in my report for you as well, but we did have the same plans that were presented to the Board of Commissioners at your last work session, were presented to the union representatives and local stewards, and I had, I actually had our third-party representative and Blue Care representative do that for us, because they answer any type of questions. This would be a brand-new idea to those groups. And then Commissioner Wolfson and myself did have the opportunity to meet with our elected office holders and present those same findings. The general consensus is, I think, what all of us felt when we looked at them, was these might not be options that are feasible, weren't necessarily more affordable by far for our, for a buy-up type of option. So what we discussed and what has been requested for additional quote is the HMO, an HMO, HSA option with the, with only a 10% copay. So that would be the only change, would be that you would pay 10% of the total bill. So essentially, that would slow down the amount of spending you have throughout the year, but it's not going to change your out-of-pocket maximum amount, because that is set at its lowest. Additionally, they did ask to get a quote on a traditional PPO, more so for the idea of being, to use that as a comparison tool to our employees, to show like, this is, this is why we don't have this anymore, a type of a, type of a thing. And then we also discussed in the classic HMO, looking at something that has a lower, same deductible as the one that was in there, but a lower out-of-pocket maximum. So the PPO apparently has anywhere from a 16 to a 21-day turnaround on getting that information back, which is okay, because that's not going to be something that's affordable. But using it for comparison is great. The other two, they assumed within a week, we should have that data back to us, so ideally we'd be able to redo that November 5th, and the discussion, I believe, was, and I'm sure Commissioner Wolfson will follow up with this, but to have a meeting kind of right after the board meets as well.
Nomination deadline for the 2025 Person of the Year. That is today, all nominations were supposed to be in. I guess for the board to make a decision, I would like to hold off on that until the end of October, if at all possible. We have the two nominations. Nothing else has been brought forward, and then that way, it would give anybody time if they wanted to reach out to any one of the individuals, so that when we come together at the end, we can make our decision.
Sounds good.
Unless anybody has any other thoughts?
No, I think that timeline works well.
New business, there was nothing listed, so we are on to motions and resolutions. So whenever you are ready.
Move to appoint Alma Lou Crossley to the Roscommon County Transit Authority Board for a two-year term, beginning October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2027.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sencer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Committee reports. Commissioner Morley, would you like to start?
Yeah, because Steve took a lot, I don't have to say as much. I might keep it under my five minutes this time. On September 24th, attended the Central Michigan District Health Department's board meeting. Both, you know, Commissioner Milburn and I do that. A lot of uncertainty still at that point, because the budget had not been approved. They did get more revenue than anticipated in their Medicaid reimbursement. They had, they thought they'd budgeted for like $600,000, but they actually got $1 million. So that enabled them, at this point, this was before the budgets had been passed, but for their budget to be balanced and put together. So that was quite a bit of that conversation there. On the 30th, I also attended Senator Slotkin's virtual, I'll call it a town hall, just talking about what's the potential things that might happen with the federal shutdown. And then went to the MAC Conference on the 30th through October 2nd. So the big meetings that at least I attended was the crisis intervention teams and mental health. That seemed to be a big topic of that whole conference. A lot of people having sidebar conversations even about that. A case study with Grand Travers County of how they have really realigned for economic development and trying to balance being a tourism, you know, location, but still driving business and new people coming in. That are, that's a workforce, not just tourism. Great case study to have, to consider for us in the future, because I think, I think what we face, being tourism-related, but also trying to bring in growth and jobs and things like that, it was, we're not Traverse City, but there was some really good key learnings from that. Community mental health redesign. One of the things that's going on in the state right now is the Department of Health and Human Services wants to put out to bid all of our mental health services. So we're a part of Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. They cannot apply for this by themselves, so it looks like they're trying to get HHS and any private organization like a Blue Cross to do these bids. The timeline was very tight, so there was a lot of discussion about how those within MAC are not supportive of this, because it takes away the local control. There was a lot of conversation. MAC Business Meeting, their key platforms, which you heard, and their legislative update. October 6th, went to the Higgins Township Board Meeting. They are working on, they're going to be splitting the expense of building permits with the village, so it saves both of them money, and they get the really nice permit that are carbon with the hard copy paper, and that'll save them money in the long run and have a good form. They raised $1,700 at their Fireman's Memorial Pancake Breakfast, so they said that was pretty good. Their planning commission group has used their budget for training, and there is one planning commission person who wants to go to another training, so they had a lot of discussion about that doesn't fit the budget. They are not, apparently according to their treasurer, they are not allowed to move within departments. If the training budget's gone, you can't offset it somewhere else if you want more. That's the way their auditor explained it to them. And then they were talking about their township. Revenue sharing has been cut, and Steve explained that. That's all I got.
Commissioner Milburn?
I went with Kim's District Health last week, and went to Economic Development. Thing there, the takeaway was Rich Castle Consumers Power had a big get-together at Consumer, at Skinner Park in Roscommon Township. Very well-attended little get-together. The big thing that I focused on this week was veterans. We have a veteran, there's the big three things that we'll focus on in veterans right now are veteran reintegration, disability claims. We're educating veterans on three different departments in VA. Veterans Benefit Administration, Veterans Health Administration, the Veterans Frimitory Administration. Today, we have Kenny, Keith, Alicia, and Ginger here to represent the veterans. Thanks for being here, guys. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Russo?
Just union negotiations. That's it.
I had the Horton Lake Improvement Board meeting on October 3rd. We were informed that there is a big improvement with the wild rice out in the middle grounds of Horton Lake. The bed is getting larger and continuing to grow. We also talked about doing some mechanical harvesting this next year. This will be up for more discussion at our February meeting to see exactly what it would look like and where that could possibly take place that would be most beneficial. We were currently talking and looking at possibly canals or along the southwest shore area to help with the weeds washing the shore that happens a lot in July and August. Also approved the role and set the assessment rates, same as last year, which is down from the initial amounts. It was $80 for lakefront, $40 for the backlot, and the meeting dates were set for 2026. Later today, we have a meeting set up with the owner of Hi-Fi Brandon to discuss and possibly come up with a solution on what keeps happening with the Higgins Lake monitor. What that looks like, I can't tell you until after that meeting and where we'll go. And then, of course, I attended the MAC Conference, September 30th through October 2nd, and I'll talk about a couple of things in my board comment on that. Commissioner Wolfson?
Yes, I have a Materials Management Planning Committee meeting on Friday at 10:00. Also, with Materials Management, there's supposed to be a lot of money, grant money coming from the state for infrastructure items on compost sites. That's money separate from the Materials Management Planning. I'm trying to set up a meeting with my field man. In the meantime, what I found with the biggest, one of the biggest problems at compost sites is getting enough screened to get rid of it easily. I mean, there's, there's just people standing in line to get it if it's screened, and that's, you know, the equipment needs to be able to handle a lot of capacity. So I thought perhaps the county could put in for this infrastructure grant, or a portable screener that can go from township to township and increase their capacity greatly. I have more information on it if you want it. I'm waiting for a quote from them. It's probably going to be around $100,000, the screener and a side conveyor belt for it. I think maybe we ought to write into the grant some maintenance for it in the future, but this is an infrastructure grant that doesn't affect our Materials Management. And for a year now, I've been told, there's lots of money going to come forward for this. And so along that note, on the 20th, I'm going to attend a grant seminar or webinar, and I don't know just what it's going to entail, but it's supposedly to help your county get ready for grants. So I'm going to attend that. On the opioid stuff, I stopped and visited Little Bucks and Bobcats Daycare Center, because I could foresee that sometimes people needing help with dealing with opioids, they'll need childcare. I met with Anthony Blair, or Bear, first-rate outfit, very nice guy, very happy to work with us. Whatever we need, he's willing to do. He said that for a cost, it would be $6. He said that for a cost, it would be $6 or less an hour. And he, and he does have capacity to take on more if you find that service needed. Met with the Transit Authority on getting passes for people. I stopped and talked with the Veterans Office on it. And then I met with Lori Beck, Lieutenant Beck, to see about setting up periodic meetings so that we can compare notes on how things are going. She thought it was a little bit too soon at this time, but in the next month or two, we would be setting up meetings for that. Along that line, I had the thought that we're going to reach the point where we need a coordinator for these programs. And we may have to hire one. Because we are going to want to deal with the general public needing help too. And all my research so far, finding agencies that can help these people, there is no general directory. And sometimes the agency doesn't exist no more, and sometimes the phone number doesn't exist no more. And I thought if we hired a coordinator, they can put all this information together, keep it updated. And when someone contacts, they need help, they can be sent to the correct direction with correct information updated. Now, as far as cost on that, it would probably be a part-time person. Hopefully someday it would have to be a full-time because what we're doing expands so much that it's going to be a full-time job. We have $722,000 approximately in, for this now. We've committed a little over $400,000 for the Sheriff's Program. There's still money there. For the next five years, for each year, we are going to get another $150,000 to $160,000. And that doesn't count the Purdue money. Through 2030, we'll get no less than $71,000 a year. So we'll have money to make the program grow, and I think we'll have money to put in place a coordinator for all this. I'd like to see us, you know, maybe in the next couple of months, we may get to that point. But I think we can find a local person that can accommodate us on this. Just my thought, you guys have to help decide.
You know, we did speak earlier, but I would like to see you go forward with this and get us more information to move forward.
Okay, I can, yes, Mark?
Yep. Appreciate the earlier brief today. I concur with your recommendations. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that every dollar is spent wisely. And I think that we'll put together a program that will, that will show that intent. I know that the money that we've dedicated to the Sheriff's Department will be used wisely under, under the leadership of the Sheriff's Department. We want to make sure that the $300,000 is used appropriately too. But I appreciate your time and energy in this, and I concur with your recommendations. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I as well, I think this is one of our key goals and how we need to keep moving forward. So one thought might be as well is 211 handles a lot of resources for people that's not 911. I know the lady runs that for our state, so if you'd like to talk to her and kind of see how that might be a good wraparound and a facilitator, you know?
As I was telling Rex this morning, I brought up the 211.
211, yeah.
That's already on my list of agencies?
That'd be, because they're already fielding phone calls, so it's a good setup.
There's all, but see, a coordinator would coordinate all these services.
Right, no, I wasn't comparing it to the coordinator, I'm just saying that's another group who can fund.
There's also one out there where, where the hospitals are going to provide money for, for medical services in certain conditions.
Right. I would also like to recommend to our chair, the group that we listened to at the conference around CIT
Yes.
would be a really great presentation for all of us to hear and how that worked and how fundamental that has been. It kind of is aligning with what you're already working on. It may just be another resource for all of us to listen to, that'd be my suggestion.
I would have to agree with that. I actually was going to talk a little bit more about that in our board comment. Nope, that's okay. So seeing as you brought it up, one of the things that they do is they help find what services our county also already currently has. Especially when we're dealing with mental health, they help develop and locate any stakeholders. They help build a wraparound program through all the phases. Their program has been very successful in other counties that they've already implemented these things in. I would love for them to come and give a presentation here during one of the work sessions, and they were, they were open to that. They bring together law enforcement, mental health professional, advocates, and any other necessary partners to develop a comprehensive program. And they kind of explain what that looks like. So it's worth at least, in my opinion, listening to what they have to say. Anyway.
I just applaud that we are working through this. With union negotiations and budgets and like level, this is a big undertaking. And I think it's really important that we keep pushing. And I, and thank you, Commissioner Wolfson, for continuing to work through that because we can't wait till it's too late, can't wait till the end.
I agree 100% with this.
That Materials Management alone, those two are huge projects.
Yeah.
So thank you. Public comment, do we have any public comment? Come on up.
Julie. Hello, I'm Julie Darden, I'm the District Director for Michigan State University Extension. And I brought a little prop myself, it's not as exciting as a giant teddy bear, but it's 4H Week, it's National 4H Week this week. And these little flags are something that our clubs have so that they can say the Pledge of Allegiance before all of their club meetings, just as you do before your formal meeting. And so they can also say the 4H Pledge. And with your indulgence of the time, I will say the 4H Pledge for you. So youth in our program, which is, 4H is the largest youth-serving organization in Michigan. We reach, our programs reach more than 200,000 youth across the state of Michigan. We'd like to reach more, and with support and partnership with counties, we can do that. So the 4H Pledge, and if you're an alum of 4H, you might already know this and you can join in. You say, "I pledge my head to clearer thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living for my club, my community, my country, and my world." So that's how we start all of our club meetings. Right now in Roscommon County, we're working to support the Sewing Club in Houghton Lake. We have, I think, seven youth who are involved in the Sewing Club. It's hosted by Becky's Best Sewing Machines in Houghton Lake. And a number of people who are connected to that business and who are just excited, enthusiastic sewers, have gone through our screening process and become volunteers with the 4H program, gold-level volunteers. We're really happy that we have active interest in 4H, and it's really growing. I mean, it's, I'm getting a lot of inquiries coming in the door. It's my, currently, there's no person who's assigned to do that work. So I'm working with Sarah Malone, who is the supervisor for 4H staff in this region, to try to meet the needs of those volunteers. But that's in addition to all of the other things that I do as part of my daily work. So just so you're aware, we have four or five clubs that are active in Roscommon County. There's this Interstate Exchange Club that, where youth host folks from other states, and then they get to visit other states as well. They had a, an exchange this year with Missouri youth, and they got, they will get a chance to visit Missouri in the future. I think their plan is for this coming summer, 2026. We have the Cross Country Ski Club, which obviously is active in the wintertime, and the Basketball Club, also active in the wintertime. And then we have an Active 4H Council, and I'm trying to think. Oh, we have a Veggie Investigators Club, which does a vegetable garden and engages youth in being hands-on in the garden. So those are the current clubs. I've had a lot of inquiry and interest. Unfortunately, I'm not at a capacity where I can grow the club. But I've got a lot of, a lot of parents who are really interested and excited to see that they're, want to get their youth involved in our, in our 4H program. Also want to give you an update about nutrition education. You're aware that Alex Clemens, who is our nutrition, community nutrition instructor, federal funding for our nutrition education program under the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Education was ended in July with the signing of the Budget Resolution Bill that went through the US House and Senate. As a result of that, all of our staff statewide positions were eliminated, and they concluded their work on the 30th of September. We are working hard to envision what the next, what the next chapter of nutrition education will be and how we'll move forward, but we won't, we don't have that federal funding. And that came to the, came to Michigan State University Extension in the form of $10.5 million. So to replace that is a big, a big work, and we're working on that as a, as a statewide agency. But that program did end, so. The, the great thing about that program, and we'll continue to talk about the impact of it, is it does, it did and does reach people across the lifespan. So youth in schools, parents with young children, childcare entities, older adults, individuals with special needs or who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. We're really proud of all of the partnerships that we had, and we'll be looking for ways that we can continue to work with all of those partners in our region as we move forward. And then finally, wanted to draw your attention to, Extension does a lot of different things. One of the things we do, and we got a shout-out from MAC this morning for our partnership around new county commissioner training. We try to create some opportunities for communities to learn, community leadership, to learn about ways that they can improve what's happening. Coming up, we have a short-term rental policy options for local communities. So many communities have short-term rentals that they are grappling with, how to deal with that, what impact that has on the local housing availability and things like that. There've been a number of court cases and a number of different kinds of community groups are trying to figure out how do we address some of these situations? So there's a series that's happening, or it's the same program being delivered in different parts of the state, let me just say. And there's an online webinar as well, which offers the opportunity for folks here in Roscommon County to participate. It's an hour and a half, talking about trends and research related to short-term rentals and how local communities can find information and data so that they can examine the situation on the ground. And then an overview of different kinds of policy approaches, regulatory tools, enforcement mechanisms, and covering a little bit of the way that litigation has shaped this issue in the state of Michigan. So I'll just leave these flyers at the front table, thanks.
Julie, do the townships, sorry, Madam Chair? Do the townships supervisors, do they have that as well? Because I know they're really working on their ordinances, I think, for short-term rentals?
Yeah, we've made an effort to communicate it, but we'll continue to do it. And I did make these copies, so if you would like to take one.
I will, for sure, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? So board comment, Commissioner Morley?
First off, just to, I always like to highlight some of the great things that also go in our community. If anybody went to Rocktoberfest in the Village on the 4th, it was so much conversation about people who don't even live here. I mean, a lot of people who live here were there, but there were a lot of people who were coming from other counties to come to that event. It was quite packed, it was a lot of volunteers that did a lot of good work, so it was fun. Quick question on the Controller Report, real quick. Who is the direct, our new Director of Facilities?
So now that it's official, and he passed all his background checks, Justin Mann.
Okay, all right, I just didn't get that, didn't know, all right, cool. I noticed on the Sheriff's Report, you know, August and September have kind of leveled off. July is always really hard for them, so hopefully they have a little bit of a breather as they move on. Lot of extra work on the Clerk's Report, I know with the special election, which is not on a normal schedule, takes a lot of work. So, and just a thank you for checking on that BIS software, just to see if that would help any of our issues with hearing and what's going on in here. It looks like it's, it would record and then revert to, revert that to text. That might not help, the, it doesn't say who said it and things like that. So the recommendation is that it's not something that is going to make a big difference. So I just want to say thanks for checking in on that. I, you know, I think as we're winding down this October, that it liked us to find time on one of our meetings to kind of reflect what have we accomplished on our goals and objectives for the year? Start thinking about what do we not have time to do? Because I know there's quite a bit that we wanted to get to that we couldn't. And we can focus our time and money moving into 2026 to make progress on those. I know with state and federal mandates, to me, in our budget goal, I'll just throw it out, that there are so many services that are impacted by legislative actions that don't give us money, unfunded mandates. And I think that a lot of the people in our community really don't understand how our county budget works and the things that we have to provide that we don't get revenue for. And I think it's something that, I think we should continue to try to push harder and do, I don't know if it's a, not town hall, but, you know, a roadshow on this is how the budget works, these are the questions, and get people to understand. I think it also helps them trust the decisions and things that we have to face every day. So that's just some of the things that I've been thinking about as we kind of wrap up. Fall does that to me, it's fall time, it's kind of clean-up time and figure out what's, what you're going to focus on, so. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Milburn?
I read Jody's report yesterday, and I saw that we're the only county right now that probably displays their flag that she's in 1941. The flag behind everybody there came out in 1941 as an advertisement. I started to sound like Robert Kennedy. The kicker is that's the only flag that's lived, that's lived for over 80 years. There was, the, the flags were initially brought out as an advertisement for a business in 1941. We're the only county in Michigan that still has their flag. And on a more serious note, I was at a township meeting last night in Roscommon. And Joe Williams, the fire chief there, mentioned the fact that in 18, I think he said 1871 in Wisconsin, between 1,500 and 2,500 people lost their lives in a fire. I think it's important from time to time to reflect, I mean, obviously the veterans are here today, the Sheriff's Department, 911. But I think it's important to recognize the important work that the fire department does to keep people safe, so thank you.
Commissioner Russo?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
I just wanted to expand a little bit on the MAC Conference. We did attend also one that was called Who Owns Michigan and Why Does It Matter? That was a very interesting presentation, and that had to do with the development of housing, economic development, who actually owns the housing, whether it's corporate-owned, whether they're individual-owned, and why all of that type of stuff matters when it comes to your community and the type of tax dollars that that brings in. I also attended a building a comprehensive employee benefit package, which was presented by American Fidelity. Again, I think that this would be a really neat and informational workshop or work session, presentation at some point. And in one of the exhibitor halls, and I couldn't find my card, I have a feeling I left it at home, but it dealt with a pharmacy plan. And basically, instead of the pharmacy plan being through Blue Cross Blue Shield, And basically, instead of the pharmacy plan being through Blue Cross Blue Shield, you can cut that portion out and look into this, and it talks about how it reduces, because you can actually tier the benefit in the pharmacy plan to your county's and the employees' needs. So, it was something that was kind of interesting, but I will look at for that card, because he also had mentioned he would love to come in and do a presentation at any point in time for the county. So, that's all I have. Commissioner Wolfson. Okay. Then, with no further Board Comment, this meeting is adjourned and our next meeting will start at 11:10.
11:10.
I figured. No. Level Control Structure Special Meeting for October 8th at 11:00. Or 11:10. The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Russo.
Here.
Billy.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Censor?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Morley?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for agenda items coming up?
I am not taking his place.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Lamb. I'm Chair of the Higgins Lake Foundation. I'm here to represent the Higgins Lake, Higgins Lake Foundation offer for lake level sensors. I understand, Darlene, in your update last meeting, that you have a meeting coming up with, I think, Hi-Fi, either tomorrow or sometime this week. And so, I just want to bring to your attention that Darlene and Rex and a few members of the Higgins Lake Foundation Board, as well as Chase Shepke, met over a month ago to talk about Hi-Fi and USGS. We were under the impression that USGS might be replaced by Hi-Fi, and we had some concerns because USGS is widely supported. It's a United States-type measurement system. We have historical data for years. We know it's consistent, we know it's reliable, and it's a valid measurement tool. And with everything going on with lake levels, we know that we can rely on USGS. So, we had this meeting and we made a recommendation to keep USGS for another year with the Foundation's support for that, financial support. And then Chase actually recommended we keep Hi-Fi where it is today and add another Hi-Fi unit. So, that was Chase's recommendation based on his background and expertise. But knowing there's more meetings coming up, you know, our recommendation still holds, but we're certainly open to, to hear the outcome of, of those meetings and those discussions. We'd like to be involved in future discussions, but just standing or sitting before you today to let you know how much the Foundation does support USGS and we're here to lend that support moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment for agenda items? Holton Lake Delegated Authority Update. I spoke with Lake Manager Chase Shepke. Currently, Prine and Nuhoff are continuing to work on the pre-application information required for the Holton Lake structure. They have received the new flow rate data. I have not received a copy of it yet, but according to Chase, there was no change in the Holton Lake flow rate data. That is all I have for Holton Lake unless Rex, you have anything more that you're aware of.
So, no, with no flow change, we're probably going to wind up with the structure being the size that they originally planned, then probably.
Probably. Lake St. Helen. I will let Commissioner Wilson.
I haven't heard anything on that.
Okay. So, we may want to get with Spicer Group, because I believe they're the ones that work on that, maybe see if they have any.
They were waiting for the new flow rates also.
Were they? Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay. So, we are at Higgins Lake. First, we have the Delegated Authority, we're talking about the Higgins Lake Foundation offer for the lake level sensors. Commissioner Wolfson, do you want to start that conversation?
Yeah. USGS gauge on Higgins Lake, I feel that we probably really need to keep that there. Their offer was to pay for that, but in exchange, they wanted to have another sensor put on the west side of the lake. I'm thinking, you know, we're going to have a meeting with the Hi-Fi today about the gauges. I'm starting to believe that maybe we only need one gauge on Higgins Lake, and that would be the USGS gauge. If the Foundation wishes to have another one on the other side of the lake of Hi-Fi, I think they can contract that themselves. If not, then the county could coordinate, they could coordinate it through us to have that done. I think we might be better suited to going back to using the USGS gauge for our operational That's just my thoughts on that. But we are going to have a meeting today with Hi-Fi on what keeps going wrong with the sensors. And, you know, people get a little excited when the wrong information's given out there on these, and maybe we need to back up and take another look at how well Hi-Fi works on that lake.
So, when, just to kind of give everybody a brief, kind of going back a little bit, with Hi-Fi, it had been working just fine on Higgins Lake for quite some time. And then the RIPRAP was placed and everything was still recording accurately to the best, you know, if you compared that to the USGS, it was still continuously within the same ranges it had, had been. At some point, between four and a half and five weeks after the RIPRAP was placed, the monitor had been moved, adjusted, or something. We, we don't know because we weren't out there, obviously. At that point is when Hi-Fi originally went offline, because we knew it was not reporting Through Chase and the information that Prine and Nuhoff had done for the permit and things like that, Chase had reported back to Ariel, who is the person that we had been working with, with Hi-Fi, the new datum levels in order for that to be recalibrated correctly. He had given them back in the, again, once and I, once again, when we go back to the datums, he had given them back in the 29 datum. Hi-Fi reports in 88. Just like she did back with Holton Lake, she did not do that conversion correctly. And that's why, once again, they were not reporting correctly. I had sent off an email immediately, once I had seen where they were, once they went back online, told her to take them off until the statum can be corrected and figured out. And I was quite blunt that I was not happy that, once again, the conversion wasn't done correctly. At that point, I got an email from Brandon, the owner of Hi-Fi, basically stating he was going to be taking over. And that's where the meeting came about for us to meet. So, Commissioner Wolfson, Chase, and myself are going to sit down with him and discuss, but my feeling is that if they cannot get this figured out and make sure that it's reporting correctly, then we have to take a look at that. And if we go back down to the USGS, I, in my opinion, and if that's what we decide to do, and a lot is going to base, I think, on the conversation that we have, then it would be our responsibility to pay for the USGS gauge on Higgins. I think we should be paying for at least one gauge in all the lakes. Those are our lakes to manage, and that's my feeling. Yep.
Yep.
Um, so that's kind of the background on the USGS and how that's been working and why we are where we are. I don't know, once we meet with Brandon, if he's going to be able to tell us that, you know, he doing, with him doing that conversion, that yep, you know, it's ready, it's ready to go back on, this is what happened. I don't know until that conversation. But I will make sure that this Board is fully aware and the public what transpires from that meeting with them. And then we'll have to make some decisions. Let's see, what else? We are also currently working on a permit for those extension of the gates to help with the wave action going over those. Once again, Commissioner Wolfson, myself, and Chase had met with Eagle, and they were very straightforward in saying that the permit could be applied for as a minor permit. It was above the high water mark, so we didn't need a professional engineer or anything along those lines. We verified over and over that Chase would be able to apply for that permit, and the answer came back as yes. And we, I have not read through all the information yet, but I was notified yesterday that they are now requiring additional information. And based on what Chase has stated, is now they, no longer falls under a certain portion because they're not looking at it as a dam, they're looking at it as a control structure, which now goes into a different part of 315, I believe.
15.
Now says that we need a professional engineer. So, I'm not quite sure where that's going to lead or what we're going to do, but the Board will have to determine if we want to continue applying for that permit. I did speak with Chase, and he does apologize, he's not here today, he's out of town working. He still feels as though the extension on those gates are necessary, but he also feels that it's necessary to have them in before spring in order for them to do the job that he's looking at them to do. So, that will have to be a decision that the Board will have to make on whether we want to allow Prine and Nuhoff basically to apply for the permit versus Chase and take over the permitting process. Frustrating to say the least.
I'd like, I'd like to mention that the local people we work with from Eagle are very good people, very pleasant to work with. But I'd also like to say that when someone keeps poking an agency in the eye, it's hard to develop a good rapport with that agency. And I think that's where some of our problems come in sometimes, but we have no control over that. So, I just want to mention that the local people are good people to work with.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
He's here for many years, and it's imperative, they come to work every day doing the best job they can, just like we do. So, it's important to realize that they come to work doing the best job they can, so do we. But it's, you don't get anywhere with, with poking, as you use your analogy, poking them in the eye. So, thanks for bringing that up.
Also, on the gauges on Higgins Lake, I'd like to mention, we had tried putting additional gauges on the lake in the.
Before.
Before. The, the problem with using Hi-Fi gauges on Higgins Lake is we're not able to mount them in a good place that when the water recedes far enough, then we're getting false readings. I mean, that's just, the nature of Higgins Lake is different than the other lakes, and finding a good place to mount them is an issue also. There was talk about, Chase had talked about putting them on a creek on the west side of the lake, but then you'd have to dredge the creek and get a permit from Eagle to do that. And so, that's like, you know, again, you're trying to make something work that's, not a good chance of feeling. So, if we continue with Hi-Fi, we need to look at that aspect of it. Does it fit that lake physically?
The other thing that I have been working with Hi-Fi on is all the back data and having that available to the public and having it to where they can basically click on a link and they can go, and they can type in a range, and they can see all the information on the I'm going to have that conversation with Brandon when we talk, because that information was supposed to be ready to go by the end of today, and I had been working on Ariel with that, so I don't know exactly where that stands. So, that is also a conversation we'll be having. As a Board, we need to decide if we want to move forward with this simplified water budget survey that Chase spoke to us about in our last meeting with him. Prine and Nuhoff has sent over the scope of the project along with estimated costs. They have estimated costs not to exceed, I believe it was $18,000 for this. So, we need to decide whether or not we want to move forward with that. And then, I would also like the Board's consent for Commissioner Wolfson and I to move forward with the application process for the Higgins Lake Advisory Committee. I would like it to be published in the Holton Lake Resorder and the Crawford County Newspaper. I can also do a blast through constant contacts, and depending on how many applications we receive, I've spoken, Jody and I have spoken about it, that possibly doing a mailing if we don't get the responses back, that we need to fill all the positions that we would be looking for. Because currently, for Higgins Lake, we would need one person from each of the township's Boards and/or somebody that the Township Board appoints. We would do one homestead resident from each of the townships within the SAD perimeters. We would also do one non-homestead resident from each of the townships within the SAD. And we would have one Board member from the Higgins Lake Foundation, Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, and the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, along with the Lake Manager. I believe before we ran the application for two weeks, is it? Once those applications came back, then Chase, Commissioner Wolfson, and myself would sit down, review, review those applications and decide who those people would be. Currently, the terms that we did on Holton Lake were a two-year term, and those terms could be renewed once, and then new members would have to come on. I would like to have the committee in place so that if the Board chooses to move forward with the simplified water budget analysis, that when that comes back, that Tom can present that to the Advisory Committee, they can discuss it, and then those recommendations can be brought forth to the Board.
Yes.
I agree.
I don't really see how we can make any future decisions until we have the information that would be contained in that, because currently, as you know, the gates are closed as much as what we can close them. Yes, we are in a severe drought, but even before that, we still cannot maintain. So, we need to have some answers as to why. And I think the Advisory Committee, them, Tom presenting to them, them having a discussion about different possibilities and ways to move forward and having that brought forth to us.
It's imperative that we have the Advisory Board Committee filled as soon as possible. Imperative.
Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Wait.
All right. I have made up a chart, just a little chart. This is a working document. Basically goes over everything that I just talked about. And I think it's important to be able to have it available at our meetings. And I think it's important to be able to have it available at our meetings, we change it as information comes in, and then that way, any public, everybody knows exactly our thoughts and where we're at. I don't know how else to communicate what we're working on and things like that, other than trying to do something along this line. If anybody else has any other ideas, I'm open to hear them.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There's also the possibility exists that somebody from the board could attend the three major associations' meetings in Higgins Lake and make a report, monthly or bimonthly or something?
If they're willing to allow us to attend them. I don't know if their meetings are held closed, if they're open to the public, I don't know.
Something we could explore.
Yep. I would also, I know Commissioner Wilson, for the Houghton Lake, you had visited each of the townships and tried to get them, would you be willing to do that for this? And then I can reach out to each of the foundations and associations to discuss with them who they would like to appoint. And then, once we have the public appointees, then we can kind of move forward and we can announce those and have those listed as well.
Yeah.
And then we, just like we do on the lake levels, under Houghton Lake, we have the advisory board, who they are, which areas they represent, so that everybody is aware of those things.
Bring them back, and we have to vote on it.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Bring the list back, and then we have to vote on the members.
I don't believe that's the way it went down last time, was it?
Yeah.
I think we just got the consensus of them, that they...
I'd like to mention, because it had been brought up to me earlier, if they've already applied, because we'd put this out before for Higgins Lake, do they need to reapply? My answer is no, we still have their apps on file.
If anybody has a question of whether their application, that we have it, they're more than welcome to send an email and ask us about that. If they want to reapply, they can, but I know that we had kept all the original ones that we had.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
I am too.
I mean, don't make them do extra work if they've already done it.
Nope, if they have a question of whether we have it, they can always reach out and just double-check that we still have it.
There's no deadline for this. Move forward.
And also, in the process, if one of them people are selected, we need to contact them, make sure they're still interested.
That's right.
They have moved, it's conceivable some of the applicants have moved or are no longer possessed, or is...
Correct.
Thank you.
That is all I have, unless anybody has anything further or any questions.
Madam Chair, just to, just to follow up, I think, from, one, I think having a list of what's going to happen in October, November, December, at least keeps us on track, and it allows the community to see that, that could be posted on our website as well, like this is what we're working on, and here are the updates, as well as a report every time we do have these meetings. It might not even be a bad idea to use this under unfinished business. If there's so little bit to discuss during these winter timeframe, then we might be able to add that to unfinished business in a regular meeting to keep people updated, you know? It's a thought.
Go ahead, and then I'll speak.
Go ahead, David, I think it's the same thing.
Okay, you know, right now, we're going into the winter months, we don't have no projects going. I was going to bring that up, or I think, instead of having monthly meetings with us, we could go to quarterly meetings, and if something does come up, we could bring it in the new business in a regular meeting. You know, with all the control structures, they're all closed, we don't have projects. This way, we're not holding IT up and all these people, you know, that come to these for an extra meeting, when we could just incorporate it into our regular meeting in the off months.
I was the same thing.
Okay. I am okay with that, especially if we are using those other means of communication.
Exactly.
You know, if we are still communicating, because we're improving on that, we're doing more with our constant contacts and on the website, making sure that we bring this to the table at a regular meeting, so people who come to the meetings can hear it. I think if we keep that going, since it is a slower time, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
If there's timeframes or there's nothing...
Well, we still...
Then it would, it raises questions as to what we're doing and why. So I think there should be regular updates to whatever we're working on, but I don't think we have to have special meetings just to do that during these summer months. And if I understand correctly, the advisory committee, one of the questions is, can they still do Zoom? Like, they can, that way, if they're gone during the winter months somewhere else, they can still be a part of that committee?
Correct.
And participate and do whatever, because there's no voting anyway in that.
No, it's just discussion.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good with that, too. I'll also comment on the Hi-Fi USGS group. Obviously, USGS has been probably the most reliable, from what I have heard over the years, so I concur with you guys and the foundation as well, with that being important to keep, for sure. I do agree that if, if we're going to do that, and that's what, and we get rid of, if we get rid of Hi-Fi, that we should pay for those on USGS.
Yeah, one per lake.
Right. And Hi-Fi, I understand, and correct me, because you guys have been doing this longer than me, that was added as well because people were saying you need more monitors to do the right thing. Maybe not.
Redundancy.
Yes and no. I think one of the reasons was it was new technology, it was able to give the community a little bit more feedback versus, when you go to USGS, you have to log into their site, and then you have to take and convert things in order to know. And with Hi-Fi, they were able to do this email blast that they sent out on a day-to-day basis. The problem with that is, what we've seen is, it's not quite always accurate when something is off with one of their monitors, and...
I will be interested to hear how Hi-Fi handles it going forward, because I think what's worse is having communication that's down, communication that's wrong, if they're not, they're not reporting the same datum that the USGS does, that's confusing to people, it just causes more problems. If they're willing to solve those problems, and we can work on a way to make that help us attain our goals of getting information, I'm okay with that. But if they can't, then we need to rethink that. That's, that's my take for it.
I was in favor of Hi-Fi because it created redundancy. Redundancy is a good, good word in this regard, because what it does, it verifies what you thought you knew. So if the USGS reports on such, such a datum, and the Hi-Fi reports the same datum, then you know that they're both working in concert. If there's discrepancies, then obviously something's wrong. So redundancy, in this case, is a good thing. That's why, that's why I was in favor of Hi-Fi initially, still am.
That's helpful.
Yep.
The other piece that I was going to finish with is the simplified water budget. I think if that is a piece that we need to fund and get going to help us work with that advisory committee and get that ball rolling, at this point, in what I'm hearing, I'd be in favor of moving forward with that and getting that advisory committee started. Because once they come, they need something to work with.
Correct.
Instead of just sitting idle. So, I think that'd be smart. That way, we kick off in 2026 with some better starting points.
Yep.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To address Commissioner Morley's comments on Hi-Fi, we went with Hi-Fi because we could report daily to people, just by email, and like Mark said, you know, verify measurements. And then we thought, well, to get a handle on what happens on Higgins Lake, put more monitors on, because, you know, this is all new to us, exploring all sides of the lake. So more monitors were put on. The lake receded because of the physics of the lake and the way they could be monitored, we were getting bad information out there because it was measuring stones. And then one monitor that wasn't affected by that, the ice took it out. So, it's, a lot of the difficulty has become because of physically being able to put monitors in a safe place to monitor the lake.
Well, the background information is helpful, no doubt. In my short term, I've experienced how difficult that has been. I agree with redundancy, if they're both working the same way and positively, so that's really my own point, it's not about keeping or not, as long as they are both working properly to help us do our jobs. If it's not, then let's rethink. But that background is helpful to know why they came where they were.
We have no unfinished, no new business, no motions, so we're back to public comment. Any public comment? Manu?
Good morning, thank you, Charlene Cornell. I just wanted to let you all know that we had Chase attend our last board meeting to explain the difference between Hi-Fi, USGS, all that, and then this water budget proposed project to the $218,000. Then he talked to us about observational wells, asked at the end of the meeting which one he preferred, he said observational wells. So I don't know if you all have talked to him about that, or if he's informed you, he thinks that would be far less expensive.
Observational wells.
Around the lake. That's all I know about it. I'm sorry, I can't tell you anymore, I'm not a scientist, but it might be worth a conversation with him, that would be cheaper and more beneficial.
Yep.
So, thank you. When you all figure it out, you can...
Board comment. Thank you. Any other public comment? No, that's okay. Board comment, Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, I'd like to address the wealth thing. I had conversation with Chase over that. That was going to get into real deep studies to do that. And what that was going to do is try and figure out groundwater and all that, and from my conversation with him, that was going to be quite expensive. And that's why he thought about this simplified water budget study. But observational wells was going to really get into it really deep to figure out stuff.
Any other board comment? I have not spoken to Chase regarding observational wells, but before the board moves forward with anything, I definitely will have a conversation to see what the differences between the two. Commissioner Russo?
No.
Commissioner Melbird? Commissioner Morley?
I didn't, until we went around the room. Yeah, I had not heard that either, and I think it would be important in one of our communications, once we get an answer on that clarity, because if one group hears it one way and we're hearing it a different way, I think that's part of this miscommunication. We need to clarify what that means.
She was really good about emailing.
Absolutely. It goes, it can go in constant contacts, it can go frequently asked questions, I mean, we can put it in a lot of places, but I think clarifying what was said and what does that really mean would be very important. Last but not least, I understand the work that it takes to work with our governmental agencies. I know our local Eagle team has been very helpful, and I applaud the fact that the two of you are working even the higher-ups to understand, like, why did you tell us this, and now you're telling us that? Because I think that conversation happened recently, and it'd be a great follow-up to say, they're telling us we can't do that now, why did you? So that we can keep that on record, and we have record of what they've said, because fighting them doesn't get us anywhere. We've got to build that rapport, and if you listen to any county group that is working on huge projects that involve the government, they do that, that's why they have lobbyists, right? They pay a lot of money for lobbyists to say, we need those people to understand that impact. So the more we can continue to build that rapport, I think it'll serve us better for the future.
With no further board comment, this meeting would be adjourned.